In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 6, 2023. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on October 27, 2023: The Daily Record, The Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Happin to Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video-on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your public statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please? Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mrs. Orm?
Here.
Mr. Raya?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Mrs. Van Aken?
Here.
Mrs. Golderer?
Here.
Mrs. Kogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, student committee reports. I'm Lenny Smith.
Hello. Recently, it's been a bit slow in Par High, so I don't have a lot to speak on, but the Spanish and Italian honor societies held a Walkathon on the 4th. The senior class had their annual volleyball tournament on November 14 at 6:00 p.m. Students created teams of six for $5 a person to support the senior class. Asian American Club had its street fair event on November 3rd where members ate Asian street food and made lanterns and origami. The Italian Club hosted a cooking event on the 14th making spaghetti a la carbonara. Red Cross had a Chipotle fundraiser yesterday from 5 to 9. Seniors have started applications for senior internships. Interact Club is having its Culture Connection night tonight from 6 to 8 p.m. Peer Buddies is having a Thanksgiving event for members on the 20th during lunch. The Tri-M Music Honor Society is having their induction ceremony on the 20th. Club photos will be taken on the 21st for the yearbook. The Hosa Club will be having a movie night on December 5th, and the Fall Drama is December 7th through 9th. I would tell you what the Fall Drama is if I knew, but I swear, they're keeping it secret. I can't find it anywhere. But it's on December 7th through 9th.
All right, time. Sanika?
Hello, everyone. Our Tri-M Music Honor Society had the incredible opportunity to visit Lake Par last week and work with the students. We had Halloween at the Hills on October 30th, and clubs just sign up and participate, and they have the choice of either having a scary or friendly house. And then, as student council, we give out rooms and set up and sell pizza and water. And Interact Club collected canned goods for Interfaith Food Pantry, and the clubs that participated were ICC, Drama Club, Interact, Civics History, Honor Society, Erase, DECA, FBLA, Key Club, Unified Buddies, French Club, National Art Honor Society, Science Olympia, Space Club, Anime Club, Italian Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society. On Friday, October 27, at Picatinny Arsenal, PHHS students from the Honors Engineering and Design Class went to build and test something I actually can't pronounce, sorry, against eight other competing schools. And Kira Chebchev finished 10th in the Group Two State Championship on Saturday, and she's the first girl in school history to qualify for Meet of Champions in cross-country, and she won the Daily Record Athlete of the Week. And we have our Fall Drama, Marian and the True Tale of Robin Hood, Teen Edition, at 7 o'clock on Thursday, November 30, Friday, December 1, and Saturday, December 2. Tickets are for $10 for adults, five for senior citizens, and free for PTHSD students. On November 3, student mem-- oh, wait, never mind. Sorry, I already said that. Girls' soccer has their banquet tonight, and then girls' tennis has it tomorrow at Olive Garden. DECA is selling customized friendship bracelets for Oasis, a charity for women and children in need. Winter sports will be starting soon, and then the Powderpuff game was on Monday, and seniors won 31-6. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our students? Thank you very much. All right, the presentation is next. First, we will have 2023 Project Graduation from Mrs. Cadian and Mrs. Hornung.
Thank you all know me. I'm Liz Cadian. Oh, I don't need to give you my address right now. Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm coming up to talk about Project Graduation. I'm going to give you a little background. This was given to me. I've never run Project Grad before, so just bear with me. Project Grad began in Oxford Hills, Maine after commencement parties claimed the lives of seven teenagers in 1979. In 1980, they held their first Project Grad as an event to prevent accidents caused by drug and alcohol abuse by providing graduating seniors a safe, fun, and chaperone evening on the night of their graduation. In the years to follow, many districts across the country followed suit. PHS held its first Project Grad in 1987 and has continued since. In order to make Project Grad a success, we need the support of Parsippany School District and the community. For 2023, PHS provided our attending graduated graduates pizza and beverages before busing them to an online event at the Branchburg Sports Complex. Once at the facility, the students enjoyed a comedic hypnotist, hypnotist, there we go, and participated in activities including volleyball, basketball, flag football, soccer, arcade games, gala-- a gaga pit? I don't know what that is. Inflatable obstacle course, climbing structure, and laser tag. Other entertainment provided include karaoke, caricature, fortune teller, and a T-shirt transfer station. Attendants also received a class T-shirt designed by a fellow student and a constant supply of food and drinks, topping it all off with a continental breakfast in the morning before being bused back to the high school. The 212 students that graduated last year, 140 students attended the event. Although the event cost $28,851.49, the total student contribution was $14,857. The actual cost per student is over $125. We ask students to pay this much, or as little as 85, if their budget doesn't allow for the full amount. We also provide scholarships for students with needs. This year, we provided for eight students. The remainder of the cost in the 2023 was covered by direct public support, outside fundraising, and community donations, including the generous donation from the Board of Education. Due to the circumstances last year, PHS was short close to $1,000, which we borrowed from our Project Grad emergency fund. We would like to continue this tradition and offer the same experience, and this year is just a little-- I'll get to that in one second, for the upcoming graduating class of 2024. We are asking that you consider putting the same dollar amount in the budget again this year, if not more, so that we can keep making these events affordable for all our graduating students from both the High and the Hills. Due to the change in the gradu-- the reason why I can't say it's at the same location is that the High is still looking for a location. Due to changing our graduation date, unfortunately, many places that we have gone to in the past have all been booked. So we are still calling and calling because I think a lot of districts in our area have now decided Project Grad is a way of going. So fingers crossed I got a possibility as of last night. So hopefully, we'll get that. But with saying that, there is a chance that we might need more money, and I know that the board is very generous, but if you could ever spare us anything extra, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, well, she pretty much said it all, that I'm Desiree Hornung. I have a senior at the Hills. He's my firstborn, so this is my first time with this as well, so just kind of learning as we go. We were fortunate to find a place. It's a little bit far, but we do have a venue secured at Adventure Crossing in Jackson. And we did have to guarantee a minimum of 100 students. So similar to what Liz said, anything that, you know, the board can do in addition to our efforts of fundraising to help offset the cost of the ticket, so to make it affordable for everyone, we would greatly appreciate it.
Just on a personal note, this is my last child in the district, so this is pretty much my last year of coming to these with children in district, so I want to definitely go out with a good experience for him. Thank you.
Board members, were there any questions about Project Graduation? Misses Orm?
Yes, I'm sorry. In the past, the Hills and the High have attended at least on one occasion a facility together. Is that an option for you guys this year? Not enough space in the facility that the Hills is using?
I don't know enough about your location.
Yeah, we didn't look into it. We kind of just started, you know, kind of late and hit the ground running separately and then kind of synced afterwards, so it's something we could look into, like if we needed to.
And also, part of the problem in the past, some of the kids have said, like, their girlfriend or boyfriends might be at the other school, and they want to kind of be with their own friends, so I think that's why they try to keep it separate. That's what I heard. Yeah, I never ran it before, just that's what I heard.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. All right, and our third presentation will be from Ms. Gofillen, our lawyer, on Annual School Ethics. Oh, wait, sorry, I forgot the PEF grants. Hold on. The second one. Sorry, Mr. Latis.
You can do mine.
Thank you so much. My name is Andrew Latis, and I help run the Parsippany Education Foundation here with Stella Gezis, who ran it for like 20 years, but she's still on the foundation as well. So thank you, guys, thank you to the Board of Ed for your time today and hosting us. On behalf of the Parsippany Education Foundation, we're extremely grateful to be here today to present our grants for the 2324 school year. Our organization was founded in 1996 to enrich the opportunities and experiences of students in the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. Its Board of Directors consists of volunteers committed to developing a community of learners. The foundation awards proposals put forth by three groups who have direct involvement in the learning process: students, educators, and parents. We're so thankful to the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity today and for your continued support. And thank you to Allison as our liaison. She's been amazing as part of it. November is always our most enjoyable month because, you know, again, for many reasons. It gives us a chance to review and learn all about the amazing creative approaches that so many teachers in our district have towards their student body. It continually enriches us to know how much these teachers care about the children within the Parsippany School District and go above and beyond to meet the students and the faculty's growing needs. Secondly, it's a culmination of sorts because now we can see all the annual fundraising and hard work that pays off through golf outings, soccer tournaments, jeans days, and much more. Lastly, we just enjoy it so much to be a small, little vessel in helping these kids reach their full potential by awarding these grants to the Parsippany School leaders and teachers. We're so blessed to play a small part in enriching the student/teacher/administrator experience. This year, we're privileged to learn about numerous opportunities to enrich STEM students across the district through innovative, full-steam-ahead, and math-stackers programs. We also provided numerous grants aimed towards preparing our special-needs students through team-building, social learning, and more. In total, we provided over $2,000 to continually fund special-needs programs such as trips to Life Town for our elementary school students. In addition, we're able to fund amazing creative extracurricular programs like podcasting for our Parsippany High School and even provide extra equipment for our high school PE department in the form of disc golf set for the high school students. It's a privilege to not only encourage vast learning in science and technology, but also to provide amazing opportunities for the hundreds of students that pursue music and the arts. We're so proud to fund the Backtrack Vocals Mini Residency that brings all of Parsippany's chorus students together to learn and grow under the teachers and music professionals to deliver an amazing concert for the whole community. This is just a sampling of the grants we awarded throughout the year that help enrich our school system. In total, we would like to provide this check in the amount of $24,182 to the Parsippany School District, and thank you so much for your service to our community of students and leaders. So with that, I want to present this to Allison, our liaison. I wish it was like a big check that I could--
I know they work very hard to go through those grants and make sure that they are, you know, learning about everything and giving the money, so I just want to say thank you very much, you guys, for all your work.
Thank you for your help.
Did anybody have any questions for PEF before they escape? All right, now, Mrs. Gofillen, we're ready for you, sorry.
It's always good to go after somebody who just gave you money. This is wonderful. All right, so this is our Annual School Ethics Act for school officials. All of you have been on the board for a period of time, so we're going to scoot through a fair amount of this in terms of the fact that you know this act. We've been over this every year. We do this at our reorg in a very brief way, but there is some new information, some new advisory opinions that I wanted to make sure that you are aware of, okay? So we know that the School Ethics Act basically prohibits Board of Education members, certain administrators, from taking actions that benefit themselves, their family members, or, quote, "others," end quote. What relatives and others mean are always different. All right, so who does it apply to? Board of Education members, administrators, superintendents, assistant superintendents, business administrators, holders of supervisor, which also includes your directors' principal certifications, and non-certificated staff who are recommending, making recommendations on hiring or purchasing. All right, the Code of Ethics, which is in the 18A12-24, only applies to board members. Okay, we have your affirmative obligations. Again, the one that seems to trip a lot of boards up is the confining our board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and working as a board, not as an individual. The administrative code was updated with the school ethics regulations. We were updated on March 6, 2023. There were 61 pages of amendments which were designed to improve the style, clarity, and grammar, as well as the issues in the School Ethics Commission Advisory Opinions. Anything that is 61 pages long does not clarify anything. It does specify the changes that they're making for the Board of Education trainings and the Board of Education, the disclaimers that you have there, I'm sorry, the filings that you have to make. Basically tells you how the Board, the School Ethics Commission will come after Board of Education members if, in fact, you have not filed the appropriate statements, right? The training, you'll see that third bullet. The School Ethics Commission has really done away with reprimands for filing and training violations. Unless there's good cause, once you have missed those deadlines for filing and for your training, your name goes to the School Ethics Commission. They will issue an order to show cause, and then you have a period of time to fix that. If you don't fix it within the first 30 days, you'll get a slap on the wrist, a censure. If you don't do it within the next 60 days, you'll get a suspension, and then if you don't do it within the timeframe of the order to show cause, they may remove you. So just be aware that they're being a little bit more strict on your training requirements as well as your filing requirements. All right, so your training, your newly elected or appointed board members, it's got to be done within your first 90 days of your first term. For newly elected and appointed board members, there's separate trainings within the second and the third year of your first term. They've also reworked some of the training requirements consisting of skills, methods, CUSAC information. If you are re-elected or reappointed to the board, you have advanced training that has to be completed within a year. All right, in your packet is basically the process by which you can file your training statements, okay? The advisory opinions, now, the Board of Ed attorney can do it, can actually request the advisory opinion on behalf of a board member. The public advise-- the advisory opinions are not made public unless there's an affirmative vote by the School Ethics Commission of six members or more. They usually don't do that unless it's an opinion on a matter that's kind of novel, different than what they've seen before, or they're changing their mind on something, which is, has happened actually quite a bit the last year. All right, your financial disclosures, new board members within 30 days of being sworn in. Everybody else on or before April 30th, please make sure you get to Robin, get your financial disclosures in, all right? New administrators to the districts have to fill, if they're appointed after April 30, 30th, they have to file within their 30 days, right? Just a reminder that the disclosure statements are public records, and they are also approved by the ECS. That information's going up to the county superintendent. There's some links in there in case you want some further guidance. All right, advisory opinion update. Mother-in-law, in case anybody was questioning this, they are your, she is your relative. You do need to refrain and recuse yourselves from matters involving the superintendent as well as anyone up the chain from your mother-in-law to the superintendent, as well as negotiations. I'm going to bring this up because we're going to see later a chart, a new chart that they have come up with, basically outlining all of the potential relationships that you can have out there, and whether or not they constitute a relative or not. And I think you guys will remember, Parsippany was, you know, we used to do a chart for you guys. I think they actually pinched that from you guys. All right, a board member with a student employee in the district's after-care program, this is an immediate family member. You're going to say, hey, but why can that person be employed by the district? Isn't that a violation of the nepotism policy? Just a reminder that the School Ethics Commission does not deal with the nepotism policy, but that immediate family member does exclude the board member from voting on matters pertaining to the superintendent, anyone in the chain of command from where, from the supervisor of the student up to the superintendent, and because, in this case, the supervisor was a member of the local education association, everything having to do with that, the LEA was off limits for this board member to negotiate or to vote upon. All right, this is a really interesting case. This is a board member's company serving as a subcontractor to the town. However, the contract was with the board, and there were tennis, the tennis courts were, that the contractor was working at, were on the board's property. The board owned two of the six. The School Ethics Commission said that because the contract between the, between the board member and its company was with the town and not the board, they could go ahead and enter that contract, but they could not participate in any discussions or votes. They couldn't review any payments, and if the board's, if the member's company was selected, it would be preferable that that board member not work on the property of the board. If it's your own company, whether or not you can do that, that's always questionable, but if there came a problem, you had to follow the chain of command. Prior to the arrival on this district property, and this is the part I wanted to bring to your attention, the board member should advise the superintendent that you're on the property so that the superintendent can communicate to staff that you are there, basically not as a board member. And I would bring that all to your attention simply because that happens all of the time, right? You're here for your children, you're here for, you know, social events. Just let the superintendent know that you're going to be on the property so that they can alert the staff that you're there as a member of the public or a parent and not as a board member. All right, so the next two cases, the next two advisory opinions, '07 and '06, are very interesting. When is a sister-in-law a relative, and when is she not? You would think that the answer should be the same. It is not. If it is your spouse's sister, that's a relative. If it is your sibling's spouse, it's another. Very clear, very, very, very clear. Does it matter at all? It does. It does because, in fact, there's different rules as to whether or not you are banned from negotiating, banned from dealing with your superintendent. So I have a little slide here about is a sister a relative or not. It is the school official's marriage that determines whether an individual is regarded as a relative, and you'll see in that third paragraph, you marry the family. It is your marriage that determines whether or not that person is a relative. It doesn't matter who your siblings marry, it doesn't matter who anybody else marries, it matters who you marry, you marry the rest of their family, all right? Because that is also clear, the School Ethics Commission gave you a little chart, and it's actually pretty handy. You've got everything from, you know, your children, your spouse, your stepparents, your half-sibling's spouse, your spouse's nephew, your son-in-law, daughter-in-law. It basically lets you know whether or not they're considered as a relative for purposes of voting on matters pertaining to your superintendent and matters pertaining to negotiations, all right? So I have a better copy of that. I will give that to Joni so that you guys can have that. We tend to need that in Parsippany. This is actually a very interesting opinion because this is a change. The vice, when your president is conflicted, it previously was that that president could still appoint your committee members and could still appoint your chairs of those committees. They just couldn't participate on those committees. They cannot. The School Ethics Commission has said, now, the president, if they are conflicted, may not participate in either the appointment of the members, the appointment of the chairs, not to mention participating in the committees themselves. So then it goes to the vice president to handle those situations. If, in fact, as the case may be, we have another individual that would be conflicted, my suggestion in that situation would be that the board vote to have a non-conflicted member make that appointment so that we don't run into that situation. But that is a change. All right. Special education advocate, you may not, as a board member, act as a special education advocate for families in the school district in which you serve. Basically, because this individual would be participating in IEP meetings, representing families, seeking to initiate special education requests, they said that there was just too much overlap where the parents would be in conflict with the district. So advocating for district student and family against the district in-- in situations where the district's providing services would be seen as reasonably being expected to prejudice independent judgment of that board member. So that came out in January. All right, that one's kind of old news. Lunch lady, you cannot be the lunch lady because there's just too much overlap in that one. The, this is a really interesting, you'll remember when the health standards came down and the question came up, can a board member vote to refuse to implement the comprehensive health and physical education standards or change the statutory language from an opt-out to an opt-in? This became a very hot topic button. A lot of allegations that this was offending the ethics if you didn't vote for this. It took the School Ethics Commission five meetings to come out with an answer which basically said, yeah, we're not sure. We don't have a, we don't have a law. Well, there's a bunch of consequences that would attach to the board if you didn't pass this. There's no law and there's no court rule or a judgment against an individual board member. Because don't forget, that School Ethics Act applies to an individual board member. There's no judgment saying that the school official has violated the law. If there were, then the School Ethics Commission would take action against the board member. But you would have to have that ruling first before you went to the School Ethics Commission. That's one of the hardest, I have yet to see, or I shouldn't say that. I have yet to see in the last probably fifteen years that allegation proved because you really do need that judgment in hand. All right, Facebook, here we go. Facebook again. Yes, ma'am.
Did you skip the school resource officer or was I not paying attention?
You were paying attention, I did skip the school resource officer. If you'd like to go over that, I'm happy to go over that one. But if, that was the individual who was, a board member had a spouse serving on the board of the township. The board had a relation, I'm sorry, a contract for their SORO services with the town. The question came up was whether or not the Board of Education member could vote on that contract. They cannot. I think we, there wouldn't have been a question here on that. The question was raised to the SEC whether or not the board, the member of the township committee could vote on it. And the SEC said, we're not getting involved with that. That has nothing to do with us, we're busy enough. All right. So here we go, the Facebook posting. All right, this is non-confidential information related to the board. The Facebook group was named Q and A between the parents and the BOE blank Facebook group, excuse me. The BOE member was basically answering operational questions about the district and how the district was run. And it was all information that was publicly available. So it wasn't anything that was, you know, set in confidence. It was all information that was out there. The SEC came back and said, because the board member was providing information relating to the board and the board member's official duties, the disclaimer that was on the Facebook page was insufficient. And therefore, it would be futile because everybody who knew the board member knew they were a board member, knew they were speaking about the board, board business, and there was going to, there was apt to be confusion. So therefore, that was found to be an ethical violation. An attorney, after my own heart, basically said, please just stay off of Facebook altogether, stay off of all social media. The board member asked the School Ethics Commission, was that legal? They're not in the business of telling people if they're legal, if that bylaw was going to be legal. But that's basically advice that attorneys give because they never know what the School Ethics Commission is going to do. We have some cases that came down. This one just came down a couple of weeks ago. These are comments that were made during a virtual public board meeting. They were made from the dais. They were prefaced with, these are my own personal comments, these are not comments made on behalf of the board. There's, they had a specific bylaw that said that they could do that. That the comments that were made were very highly controversial. They were offensive, hurtful to members of the district's Jewish community. The SEC said, they understood all of it. They weren't going to opine on whether or not that was a good idea. But because the bylaw allowed it and because each board member prefaced their statement with, these are my own personal comments, not the comments made on behalf of the board, and I think they said it both before and after, there was no ethical violation. And that's, they had a portion of their meeting called commissioner's comments where board members were basically allowed to comment on any matter. This case is a, Fable is a board member who is trying to help out, conducting a personal investigation into the cost of computer equipment, contacted vendors and other school districts without authorization from the board. The SEC came down very quickly, said that is absolutely a hundred percent in violation of the School Ethics Act. The censure penalty was approved by the commissioner, basically saying this is within the purview of the district administration and the board members need to let their administration and staff do their job. Ellis Foster, this is going back to the mask mandates. A board member sent the email from his board email address expressing his personal disagreement with the mask mandates, saying if the parents in the school districts can prove that the masks were dangerous to the health of the children and we should be able to fight this, and I expect lawsuits to come because of this reason. The SEC came back and said that the email had the potential to compromise the board as the legislators and the public may view his statements as the board supporting a call to action against the mask mandates. So the Ethics Act requires that board members recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and therefore must make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Reprimand was the consequence. I suspect that if the board had discussed this at a meeting and taken a vote, that the individual was to send that letter, you would have had a different situation. All right, this is, these are our friends up the road who removed the Columbus holiday from the calendar. You'll remember this. It caused quite an uproar, number of issues. The complaint that was brought was that this board member violated the act by bringing this motion to the floor without warning, without allowing the district administration notice, didn't have, you know, the public enough time to kind of digest the information, and thereafter had a series of meetings with constituents after the motion had passed, a series of meetings with constituents to discuss and explain her reasons for bringing this motion forward. The School Ethics Commission rightfully stated, listen, regardless of whether or not you believe it was appropriate for them to bring this motion forward, that's the business of the board and that is perfectly okay. That is not an ethical issue. What they did find was a problem was after this motion passed and the uproar was townwide, the board member was called, asked to have a meeting with a number of constituents to answer for her actions. She went and had that meeting. And the School Ethics Commission said, that's where you went wrong. You should have declined that meeting because the board had then taken action. This was now the board's policy. Any response was the board's responsibility and you really had to give the district administration the ability to address this situation first. You can't be having separate personal meetings with the constituents after the board has taken action. So that's where they found the ethics. Now that one went back. The ALJ who was assigned to that case was a little tired of the case, to tell you the truth. He tried everything under the sun to try and get it to be settled. But I think his initial decision was about twenty-three pages long and I think the School Ethics Commission was about sixty. So I think they had to kind of go back and fill in some blanks. But that was the issue. It wasn't that there was a motion made, that there was no notice of the motion. It was after the board took action, you then leave it to the board to address any issues and you leave it to the administration to address your constituents with respect to the implementation of what you have passed. So that is my update for this year. If anybody has any questions? Sure, it was very interesting. And I will give the, Joni, just a better copy of the chart. Yes, ma'am.
So technically, Facebook. So technically, if you, let's say, let's say the district posts something good happened at one of the schools and you, and you share it, you know? Is that?
So I don't think there's anything wrong with sharing posts if you're not commenting on it, if you're not inviting discussion, if you're not doing that. As long, and I do still recommend, even if you're just sharing it, to put that disclaimer on the bottom of your Facebook page. I think, I know a couple of your fellow board members and have done it, you know, on the top and on the side and, you know, I think that is only helpful when you do that. So that, because if you share it, right, somebody is going to comment back to you. And then that's the discussion, that's where you get into the, into the discussion. And you want to try and cut that off. And if that discussion, if somebody does comment back to you, you say, oh, please go see Dr. Sutter. He'd be happy to hear your comments and commentary on it.
Right, or for example, one of the, a board member on one of those whatever groups, Parsippany, I don't even know their names, I don't know, Supporting Parsippany, Parsippany Fresh Face, something like that, any one of those. And somebody says something like, when is the board meeting, when is the next board meeting? And let's say one of us says, oh, it's on such and such a date. That's, is that considered a back and forth?
I don't think, I don't think that the School Ethics Commission would get involved to that granular level. You know, again, it's, I would certainly maybe just post the link to the website and saying, here it is. But I don't think that that would be, you're just certainly just relaying that information.
We just make sure we don't like clarify or anything.
No, no, don't engage. No engagement.
No engagement.
Yeah.
And the one for the advocating, is that only for special needs?
I think it goes back to, I wouldn't say it's only for special needs. I think it goes back to, if we go look at those, like the volunteer cases, it really goes to what is, how much overlap do you have, right? How much interaction do you have with district staff? How much interaction do you have with administration? If you're in the buildings and acting as a advocate for families, I really feel that you're going to, at some point in time, not you, but someone's going to put you in a situation where you may be adverse to the district or the district's interests. So I think that puts you into a situation where you may end up in a, in an area where your client's interests are adverse to the, to the district.
You said clients.
Whoever you're advocating for.
Okay. I guess, is there a difference between an advocate and a friend?
Um, I would say that it would depend on what you're doing. You know, I think those IEP meetings, those special ed meetings, yeah, I think that...
No, no, just in general, that's why I said, is there a difference between special ed and regular, let's say?
Yeah, I think if, even if you, as a board member, say you had a friend that had a student, you wanted to go to a parent-teacher conference, I would say that that, even acting as that type of advocate because they were nervous, would potentially put you in a situation where that individual's needs or interests would be potentially adverse, right? And then it puts you into a position of potentially being a witness.
Okay.
So I would caution a board member away from that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No, there's not.
Is there any unfinished business? Mr. DeVito?
I believe he wanted to discuss what we brought back from workshop.
We were going to do that in committees, but yes. All right, so unfinished business. So now we're up to committee reports. So I guess we'll start with Ms. Chappell and go around. And yes, if you would like to say, you know, anything about the school board conference, this is the time.
So, thank you very much. So I was able to attend. I was very happy to use my vacation time from my work to go and do this because it was very educational. I got, I learned a lot from this. And I also had the opportunity to catch up with some of my board members that I met during my training in January. So that was really nice to see them too and hear about the experiences that they've been having. So at the conference, there were a variety of courses that I was able to attend. Two of them were focused around new board members and really their first year of service. So one was, I survived my first year as a board member, now what? Which was very interesting. The second one was around governance two. So this is my, end of my first year and they allow you to take that governance training course there. So that was really helpful. And that was focused on finance and the board's role in this critical area of governance. So that was really interesting. Some of the other courses I was able to attend were, How Would You Handle This?, which consisted of video recordings of board meetings from around the country. It was fascinating. There was quite an array, as you can imagine, and listening, it was a very good discussion around what went wrong in those meetings and what could be done in order to prevent it from happening or to address it as it was going on. So that was very interesting. There were other things that I attended such as providing mental health programs and services, how to use data analysis to boost student, student performance and achievement, best practice for managing board meetings, how to better, how to work better with your PTA, which was a hot topic because Mrs. Goldrur and Mr. Chappell were also there with me. Then there was the unconscious bias, its impact on learning activities, opportunities in my family. And then finally, From Dissent to Consensus: Creating a Board Team, which I thought was really interesting. Coming away from it, one, I wanted to say how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve my students and serve the community of educators that we have. It's a very important job. I'm grateful to the opportunity to go to the conference and learn all these different things. And finally, I'm grateful to work with this board because some of the horror stories that I heard from other districts were really scary. So thank you for working, you know, in such a professional environment and giving me the opportunity to learn from all of you as well.
Do you have other committee reports you would like to give?
I do have the sports committee if you're interested.
Sure.
All right, so on November sixth, we had the Sports and Co-Curricular Committee. Present were myself, Jack Raya, Kendra Von Aiken, Allison Kogan, Todd Ricker, Joni Benos, Claire Herman, and Mike DeBernard. And then there were also numerous Par High and Poor Hills boosters representatives. Highlights from the evening include Todd Ricker's introduction of our new Par Hills Athletic Director, Claire Herman. I did not get to do this at that meeting, so I'm going to do it now. Of course, we thank Mr. Ricker for all of his great work as the Athletic Director. at Par Hills, and especially serving double duty for many months this year. So thank you. Uh, we do look forward to Ms. Herman's leadership and support for our Par Hills Athletic and Musical Programs. Mr. Ricker and Mr. DeBernard provided updates on all of our fall programs. Uh, we have a lot to be proud of. Um, and in the minutes, there's a great detail there, so please make sure you take a moment to look at that and recognize that. Um, and that includes not just athletics, but our band programs were super successful this year as well. Uh, while there were lots of weather and lots of injuries that didn't always work out for us, everyone certainly, uh, was dedicated and gave their all to their practices and competitions, uh, in every opportunity. Uh, other Athletic Director updates included, um, some follow-ups and some highlights to the previous meeting we had earlier this year. Uh, of special note, at Par Hills, um, you might remember me talking about the medical emergency response drills that were done. They actually came in to really good effect, uh, where there were two football player incidents that, um, were handled seamlessly and successfully, um, very, very well. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Ricker may have told some of you personally, but it was quite an accomplishment to be recognized, and so grateful that we dedicate our time and effort to those response drills, to, to allow everyone to practice how to, uh, address those. Um, the local clubs, um, in the community across lots of different sports and activities are using our fields, which will hopefully help to sustain interest in sports into high school. Uh, we did address some other feedback that was provided by our boosters, um, and, uh, we, uh, we also thanked our transportation. Um, of course, uh, we have activities that happen all over the state, and without our transportation to get there, uh, we wouldn't be able to participate, so a huge thank you to them. Some of the new questions that were raised, um, by our boosters at the meeting, are, "How do we improve interest in high school sport participation?" We did brainstorm a couple of different ideas, so I think that's still being discussed. Uh, we did, um, have somebody highlight about, um, how, uh, the recording of certain sports is an issue. Um, so essentially, um, when the camera is at the field, um, certain sports and the way that they move on the field aren't cohesive, um, aren't conducive to actually recording it, uh, well. So sometimes it pans to an open spot, instead of actually following the activity on the field. Um, there's three sports, um, specifically that we have this problem with, field hockey, volleyball, and wrestling. And, uh, we have tried numerous times to address this, uh, and we are going to keep trying, and that includes working with the actual vendors that provide the service. So, we are still trying, we're not giving up. Uh, we did clarify some things for the boosters, uh, so that they are aware, uh, there was a misconception about some decisions that were made at the booster level as opposed to policy level, so we clarified that, and so that hopefully will resolve some of the concerns that they had. And then finally, uh, they asked to share booster contact information, so that there's better collaboration across the different schools and the different sports, uh, so we're arranging for that. It was a very successful meeting.
Do you have any questions for, on the sports committee? All right. And then, do you have the DEI report, or Mrs. Abraham, who is...
I have it.
Okay.
Uh, so we went, uh, so it, it happened, um, I think it was Tuesday this week? Yeah, it was Tuesday this week. Um, and there, uh, we had a couple of different, and actually, Dr. Sutter was there with me at Par High, uh, and we had the opportunity to do icebreaker activity, to get to know each other a little bit better, uh, share our perspectives about different topics, which was really interesting to hear, um, both from the students and from the adults who were participating. Uh, they talked about some of the field trips that are coming up, where they're gonna have the opportunity to go and read to students in the elementary schools. This is something that they did last year, uh, was, and they probably had done it before, but they talked about the experience last year and how super successful it was, the kids being very excited to have seniors or having high school students come and talk to them, um, and all the silly facts that they would share along the way, so as you can imagine. Um, and then finally, they talked about the conference, leadership conference, that they're gonna be having, uh, which will be off-site to focus on important in, information that they need to be considering, and how they could implement more of the DIB, uh, policies and beliefs in everything that they do. So, um, again, and, Dr. Sutter, I welcome you to add anything that I may have missed.
No, I think you covered it all. It was great.
Do we have any questions on that committee report? All right, thank you. Mrs. Abraham, do you have any?
Thank you. I have the communications committee report. Um, communications had a committee meeting on November 6th, and present were Dr. Sutter, Mrs. Cogan, uh, Mr. DeVito, Mrs. Chappell, Mrs. Benos, and myself. Um, we discussed the update of our new website, Aptige. The website is live and going well, and we've had over 68,000 views. Uh, comments have been very positive. Parents have called looking for several sites that were on the old site and not on the new one, so we have added them back. The webmasters at the schools are getting used to it and finding it much easier than our old website. The alert system is not as user-friendly as school messenger, and parents cannot put exactly what numbers they want to be called, and so we are working with Aptige to try and get that changed. In regards to video recordings of board meetings, the first taping was successful and posted to the website and the video on the go YouTube. The only request from Mr. Brian Satch was that we move the tables closer together, so that we can move the podium closer for public comment, and that everyone speak directly into the microphones. And as of today, we have had 70 people viewing, uh, the last meeting. And Dr. Sutter let the committee know that he had had his first student superintendent advisory, uh, the previous week, and he will reference this meeting during, uh, tonight's board of ed meeting. Uh, Mr. DeVito commented on Dr. Sutter's article in the Focus Magazine, and it was very nice to see the recognition that the teachers and the programs were receiving. And Mrs. Cogan shared a draft of the holiday message to staff for the committee to review, and a draft of that was shared with the board for their review and sent out. Um, also, I had some comments about workshop this year. Um, this was my second year attending, and although I was only able to attend about two days of the workshop, this year, um, it was still extremely fulfilling. Just like last year, it was amazing to have access to all the classes and the sessions, and visit all the exhibits, meet and chat with so many different board members from all over the state, and learn as much as we can. I was able to take advantage of a few classes this year, such as knowing our why, how to work better with your PTA, which we had a few of our fellow board members there, uh, changing the culture of your board, Robert's Rules, which is always a big hit, and, uh, Dissent To Consensus: Creating A Board Team. And due to some scheduling conflicts and/or because the sessions were already full, I wasn't able to take all the classes that I signed up for, but some of the ones that I hope to do next year are Best Practices For Managing Board Meetings, Communicating Effectively During Adversity, uh, Bylaws Or Effective Rules For Your Board, 13 Common Mistakes Made By Board Members. And we also had the pleasure of attending the keynote, which was, um, featuring the soccer star, Carly Lloyd, who happens to be a graduate of Delrayan High School and Rutgers. So I do wanna take the time to thank all the architects of this year's workshop for yet another wonderful conference, and I look forward to it again next year. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on communications? No. All right. Mr. DeVito?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cogan. Uh, yes, I was also lucky enough to be able to attend workshop this year, uh, through Wednesday, and I also was able to hear the keynote from Ms. Carly Lloyd, which was very informative. Um, I also attended a number of, uh, um, uh, learning sessions regarding, uh, a session of attracting and retaining great teachers. Uh, two new, um, sessions at workshop, uh, about, one, about NJQSAC, A Pathway To Success, and session bylaws, Effective Rules For Your Board, both very, very informative. Uh, if you're new, I don't have a lot of, uh, documentation to go with them, but they were very informative. Also, uh, on the session on the, uh, State Of Students Theft, State Of Students Safety And Lessons Of Leaders, uh, how to protect your district from against ransomware, ransomware and data theft. Um, the session from the, uh, School Board Association Firearms Safety Task Force Report, which I thought was very informative in that, the way they described how the report was, uh, compiled, it had to do with, you know, firearm safety, and it was something that, like, both sides of the aisle of, of those who were either for Second Amendment or more or more against it, they both had the same kind of thought of, get, keep the gun safe and such. I thought it was very interesting. Uh, there was another session on cybersecurity, why it's a shared responsibility, and that is pretty much what I was able to see. I think there was a number of good vendors, I think we sent along to the administration about certain products we may be interested in, and, uh, all in all, it was a very good workshop. I was very happy to attend again.
Thank you. I'm not sure we have too many committee reports from this side, right? Mrs. Goldrur, do you have anything? Mrs. Goldrur, anything?
I don't have any, um, committee reports.
Do you understand that work?
Um, well, I've always attended the, I, I think I missed, I did miss two years of the, um, of the 10 years or 11 years I've been on the board, and, um, I always take a lot of classes. I, for me, it's important to, to learn as much as I can, um, you know, I'm trying, I, and I love to go to the, you know, to, to hear the, um, the legislators, what they have to say about education. I, you know, I attended the, um, the, uh, our Commissioner of Education, um, talk, the, you know, um, they had a, a couple of, um, of great featured speakers, like Jean Paul Gonzalez, who, who actually does a lot of work with, um, with the Giants, you know, and, um, supposedly they're, you know, they're doing better, I don't know, I don't follow.
No.
You don't want to.
Um, I, what I, you know, of cour, I attended Retaining Gen Y Teachers, what the research says, that was, uh, given by North Plainfield, and it was extremely interesting, um, because it is opposite to, I guess, what, um, we think, you know, in general, uh, now new teachers want to be observed, you know, more than, you know, than two times a year. They, um, you know, they, they talked a, a lot about, um, they do, they do, for example, um, they, they have hiring workshops, but they, their hiring is, okay, you get an interview today, you get hired today, kinda thing, like, on-the-spot hiring. You know, like, these things that you, you never heard of before in, in education, and of course, it's, you know, it, it depends, they do the background check and all that. But, um, so it, it was very informational to, to, I have to share the, um, I have to share that, um, PowerPoint presentation with you guys. And the, um, I mean, the best practices for managing board meetings, and how to work with, uh, better with the PTA, but I, I did find, I, I did take two, uh, about governance, you know, and that's where we were talking about a couple of chapters from, from the Governance Book, and it, it was, again, very interesting in, you know, creating the transparency, the trust, and, and building, um, community, and they were talking about how a lot of board, a lot of boards now are creating a governance committee within their boards, you know, so it, it's, it's got a lot of information, and I also attended the Carly Lloyd, uh, Soccer Star, uh, presentation. She was, she was amazing. And, um, you know, from Dissent To Consensus, we saw each other, and a couple of them, like, "Oh, we should've talked." You know, and, um, and then on, you know, Robert's Rules is always engaging, because, you know, when you, I mean, after 11 years, you think you know more, and then you realize, "Oh, I'm back to square one," you know, kinda thing. So, uh, I, I love going to these. I, you know, I'm a contractor, I've worked, you know, as a contractor for all these years, so I don't get paid, I don't get days off or anything, but I always make sure I go, because it's that important to me. But I, I really, you know, anybody on the board, I mean, just attending them is, is a really great experience. So, thank you.
Yes, I too attended, um, workshop for that entire time, and attended a lot of classes on that. I took leadership and ethics workshops, which weren't anything, we don't already know, but they're very good reminders. I did take one on virtual reality and technical education, which Z-Space had a, a very interesting product that allows the students to see and manipulate objects in 3D, and many schools are using it to replace their science labs, so they don't have to have all the equipment. And they're also replacing their Vo-Tec programs, and they gave an example that veterinary certificate programs are now allowed to use virtual simulations, because they can't get all the right animals and procedures, so it's not just in theory, like, real world is using these virtual things. Um, I took a workshop on communication, and that is, you know, in our packet. I attended the State Board of Ed Panel, the Keynotes, the Legislative, the Legislative Panel, the State Board Member Panel. Um, it's always nice to hear directly from the people, instead of just going to Legislative Committee and hearing from the advocates. And I also wanted to remind everybody that the State Board meetings are, um, virtual now, are videotaped now, and they're, you know, I found them insightful and entertaining. They are definitely, the State Board is a good example of, of board where not everybody agrees, but they remain civil and get work done. The last workshop I attended was on supporting teachers of multilanguage learners, which I was the only board member there, it was mostly administrators. I did learn a lot, I think a lot of our teachers would benefit for, from some of the ideas they presented. The handouts were scanned by Joni, I don't think they'll be useful to us, but, you know, I uploaded them anyways. And I just also wanted to remind everybody that the workshop is still active, so you can go in and get the information and see some of the presentations that were videotaped, 'cause they're still live up there. And then I have a, the Finance Minutes. The Finance Committee met tonight, and attendance was Mrs. Goldrur, Mrs. Von Aiken, Mrs. Tedesco, Dr. Sutter, and Mrs. Benos. We had an audit update. The district auditors started working on the June 30th audit last week. They're working to have the audit completed and filed with the Department of Education in time for the December 5th deadline. We had an update on Littleton, the Littleton Project. The architects are working with the contractor and a geotechnical engineer to figure out how to best install the stormwater piping and drains for the addition. There's, like, in most of Parsipony, there's bedrock, large boulders, heavy soil throughout the site. The permits are still not fully approved for the project, and because of the problems with the ground and the delay in the permits, the project is currently 82 days behind our original schedule. We spoke about the 24-25 budget, because obviously, budget season has begun. The business office will be scheduling budget meetings for December with all school principals, as well as department heads. We had a topic of the bid approvals. The bid went out for bus drivers' custodians' maintenance staff uniforms. The approval of the award is on our packet tonight, on our agenda tonight. The, we also had an update on the DHS auditorium lighting. The first part of the lighting project will begin on December 18th. The vendor expects to be done with that phase of the project, the first week of January 2024. That's for the stage lighting. And then the district is working with the school and the vendor to schedule the house lighting upgrades, 'cause they need a little bit more time for that. And so that is the Finance Committee report, if anybody has any questions. Okay. And I believe that's everybody's committee reports. So we are up to the approval of the minutes for executive and regular minutes of October 26, 2023. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Mrs. Mayor, second, Ms. Chappell? Uh, so roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor? Mrs. Orm? Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
We are now up to Superintendent's Bulletin, number nine. Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Cogan. Good evening, everyone. I attended my first Superintendent Advisory Council on Friday, October 23rd, 2023, hosted at PHHS. It was great to meet the students from both PHS and PHHS. Students provided great insight and had excellent suggestions for us. Uh, Dr. Mulrooney, he hosted a full Professional Development Day on November 7th, 2023, for district teaching staff. The feedback we received regarding course offerings for staff was great. Teachers attended sessions that were relevant to their department and discipline, and were given valuable time to collaborate and work in their professional learning communities. Highlight of my day today was I attended, not, not that I don't, not saying the board meeting was not my highlight, but I, I attended, I attended my first Kiwanis Club meeting this morning, uh, at the International House of Pancakes on Route 46. Uh, you know, I, I provided...
Can't compete with pancakes.
I provided Kiwanis members with an update concerning our schools. You know, Kiwanis is a, is a wonderful organization, and, uh, is dedicated to building better communities, and they were very, very nice people today. They really had a good time. A question was asked at our last board meeting, concerning how many students are taking Algebra I in eighth grade. Uh, the answer is approximately 24.9, uh, percent of our students in eighth grade are taking... The answer is approximately 24.9% of our students in eighth grade are taking Algebra I. Finally, I want to wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy Thanksgiving, weekend with family and friends. Enjoy the many blessings that we all have in our lives. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bulletin items one through thirty-four with addendum and read-in items thirty-five through fifty.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the Superintendent's Bulletin? Seeing done, the Secretary's Report. Mrs. Tedesco.
Hi, everyone. On tonight's Secretary's Report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the uniform bid for bus drivers, custodial, and maintenance staff. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Okay. New business. Mrs. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Last Friday, I attended the Diwali celebration at the temple over on Inton Road, I believe that's called. And it was interesting because in previous years, I've gone and we've walked around and there's been food and you go to different, you know, presentations. This one was the big meeting where they have a lot of prayer. So they asked me if I'd like to take part in the ceremony, and I said, sure. And they were sitting on the floor, and I was on a chair. They knew better than to put me on the floor. But in front of everybody, there was a tray, and on the tray, there were flower petals, rice, what else did I write? Nut, water, and those things are very sacred and holy for these people. And rice was, I was amazed at how much they used, and it was, it was spoken where, it wasn't in English, so I really, you know, that lady next to me was so kind, you know, I'd say, what does that mean? And she would kind of tell me real quick. But it was very interesting to watch and to understand what they were doing. Diwali is the victory of light over darkness, good over evil, knowledge over ignorance. It's the new year. And then at one point, there was a little, the red string was on the tray, and that's to signify luck, protection, and good fortune. And I thought, okay, I'll take one. So she tied it on me, and then I tied it on her, which was, it was kind of nice to have that kind of feeling. And everything was with the right hand. So I said, well, you know, why, you know, because they said, do it with your right hand with, and she said, because right is right. There you go. So, I mean, and afterward, they had food, you know, where you could stay, but it was late, so I left. Then Sunday, they had some kind of a celebration, and they're having, that was the family. And then this Sunday, they're having the kids' Diwali celebration. But there were many children there, and they all participated. They knew what to do. The most, the interesting thing was when they had the oil lamp. The adults got the oil lamp, but the kids got these trays with candles, you know. And they, you know, we'd swung the oil around, I guess. I don't know what that signified. I wish I hadn't been able to talk to her more, but it was, you know, and it wasn't the kind of thing where I could take pictures. It was totally inappropriate at that, you know, it was a very sacred presentation, and I certainly wouldn't have done that. But I mean, every time I've gone there, they are so welcoming and so happy to have somebody there. So if anybody can go on Sunday, it would probably be a lot of fun with the kids there. So, that's it.
Thank you. We had two other items for new business. The first one is, as part of our board goals, one of our goals was to develop a one-to-three year plan to support the, the increases in enrollment that we are expecting. So we decided we were going to set an ad hoc committee to start the process of, you know, creating a one-to-three-year plan. And so I've asked Mrs. Chappell, Mr. Ray, and Mrs. Orm to start that committee. Obviously, we only have Mrs. Orm, you know, for a little while left, so we'd like to pick her brain as much as possible while she's still a member. So I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, we are working towards that board goal, and there will be, obviously, much more time for all board members to be involved and, and work on a plan because we will need it, which is kind of the third thing on our agenda, which is the, the announcement that was in the news this week regarding Parsippany and potential pilot programs that the Town Council is approving. And the pilot programs include residential development. So I would like to ask the Communications Committee to put some kind of, present, not presentation, publication, some kind of frequently asked questions regarding pilots and school districts that we could possibly distribute to inform our community about how pilots affect the school district. Go ahead.
Our previous president, well, previous, previous, previous president, Frank Degglia, had, if you look there, or I could forward it to you, he wrote something from the board, and it's, I think it was on the patch, it must be on all publications, but he did write something to the effect of pilot programs and how they negatively affect us.
Yes, there's plenty of history of things to go back to.
Right, exactly. And, I mean, and, and at that time, we were, we had been kind of promised by the, by the mayor that there would be no more pilot programs. And there might be, you know, and if there's any more to come, and, you know, even though they, they said that, even though they said that, oh, they were only doing a first reading, once they, once they vote on a first reading, it's a done deal. You know, it's, it's going to go through. And one of them is, was the 1515 that had been approved previously, and they had to make some changes, and they, they came back, or the developer came back stating that they, they got some type of, from, from the judge stating that, you know, like, that, let's say, and I don't remember the number, that ten affordable housing units really meant thirteen. You know, that's a different math that they do. You know, we do go math, they do, I don't know. So, so, you know, it, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be very impactful on us, and we need to, we need to make sure that, you know, and the Communications Committee to put something out and, and respond to it.
And I do want to say, I believe that we, that we have been in contact with the township about the developments, and it still is in the early stages, so I think there is a chance for us to continue that dialogue and, and see, you know, if we can work with the town because obviously, we would be interested in doing that. So, that is not off the table either.
Right, but, but the thing is, is that the, the developer's attorney, Inglisino, keeps on, you know, stating, well, the Board of Education gets every penny that is budgeted, but he, you know, but it's, I mean, he's using the truth in, you know, in a way that's not really the truth because we get, we, we get the, we get the tax of the, of the, for the land, but it's the assessed value. Yet, when they do the pilot program, they get the appraised value, which is different than the assessed value. So our percentage is a lot smaller. And what I, I did say, as a madam attorney, I attended, and I said, I am talking as a private citizen, homeowner of Parsippany, when I spoke. And I said, but, you know, it, it isn't, you know, it's like previously, you know, years ago, Northville and Eastlake were built because council people at that time negotiated with the developers. They paid for those, those two schools. I said, well, you know, it's like, you guys aren't negotiating anything, you know, and, and it's not us against them. This is the same town, and the same people are going to be paying for it, you know. So, it, but again, the town, you know, the, the developer's attorney was trying to make it seem like, oh, it, it was not going to affect us at all, and that's not accurate. So, anyway.
Which is why we would like to put out something a little more.
Right, we need to.
Factual-based. Are there any questions on either of those? They're not necessarily discussion points, but I want, you know. So at this time, we are up to the hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up now and sign in the book so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are student, a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the town where you live. If you're a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please speak to, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student-staffer names in their comments, and are referred to Bylaw 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. It's completely up to you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Andy Chaffo, Parsippany, New Jersey. There's no odd number of pages in the handout that was provided to the public. There's only even numbers in here, so I don't know what the odd number pages have on them.
Odd numbers don't exist in Parsippany. All right, is there any, oh, there are. I'm waiting.
My name is Bob Vennetia. I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. I'm currently involved in opposing the pilot, the three pilots that are, that the Town Council will be voting on, on December 5th. And I'm, I'm here tonight because, you know, I got a lot of, you get a lot of contradictory information at the council meeting, and I'm trying to get straight what the relationship is between the pilot and the school district. So what I like to do is, like, try to tell you what my understanding is, and you can correct me where I go wrong and fill in the blanks where I'm missing something. So I want to start out with a budget, your budget, that, we have no pilot yet, just a plain old budget. You submit it, it gets paid by the town, and in that budget, there is included the land tax from, and I'm, I'm going to use Two and Three Campus Drive because they're, they're the ones that have the school, they're going to send the school children. The land, their land tax is already in the budget, and you're getting their money from that, those properties right now. So now we go to, okay, this budget, this pilot gets approved. Now, you still get the land tax, the same amount that you had before. You're getting nothing, no new money. You're getting the same amount. So I'm, I'm okay so far. And now they have this gigantic amount of money from the, from the improvements on the land. You get none, zippo, of that, okay? But you do get fifty, I'm, I'm just throwing out a number, you get, out of those four-hundred-something apartments, you're going to get fifty students. So they have to be paid for somehow. So I, you know, I, now here's where I get a little fuzzy. You go to the, we go to the next budget, those kids are now in there, and you get to increase your budget by the 2% cap. Where does the, you know, do you get extra for those fifty kids, or do you have to pay it out of your 2% cap? If you have to pay it out of your 2% cap, you're getting screwed. And I, that's what I didn't know, you know. So you are getting nothing, but you are getting expenses that you have to pay for. And now, you know, now the, they're paying, you know, the budget's getting paid, and, you know, these kids are in there.
Can you finish up your comments here at three minutes?
Okay. But the, the, those, those properties that have the pilot, they don't pay any of that because they're outside, they're, they're not in the tax-ratable pool. They pay nothing towards that, and they also pay nothing toward, if you have to build a school or, and, you know, bonds and interest, they pay nothing for that. So, I mean.
You can come back for another minute, and we will respond at the end. So, but.
So far, I'm, I'm okay.
My name is Tim Berrios, 24th Farmstead Drive. Mr. Superintendent, how are you this evening, board members? I also attended the Town Council meeting of last Thursday, and I want to thank Ms. Golda and Ms. Abraham for taking time out of their busy schedule to also attend. You know, there's a couple of red flags here. Mr. Vennetia has, has really done a good job trying to encapsulate it, but having been directly involved with 1515 when I was on the board, there was a lot of misinformation delivered at this Town Council meeting, and it really needs to, the record needs to be set straight. Bottom line is, is that there's this presumption that there is this bucket of tax money that comes out of the municipality that the township gets from the municipality. It was never, ever indicated, discussed, or even hinted at that it was a pass-through and that the board is part of the three-legged stool in this town. Number two is, is that although Two Century Drive, and, I'm sorry, Two Campus and Three Campus were part of the demographic study that we ran a couple of years ago, it was never part of the pilot. So let me be very clear on this. As Ms. Golda said, that this most, this train has already left a station. So I believe this coming up Tuesday is a, another meeting, and by mid-December, the ink will be dry on this, and this is going to be a done deal. So there's not much time left. My recommendation is twofold, is that if there is something to happen, that this district needs to present to the taxpayers exactly how the taxes work in this town, and it's not that you are going to the township with a bended hand and knee to sit there and say, please give me some more money, because that is the information that was delivered at the last meeting. Number two is, there was also a hint from the attorney for the builder that this would have to be some sort of contractual arrangement between the township and the district as relates to what is received, if anything. The other thing I would also say is, is that Ms. Golda did mention that there was a article that was put out by a former board member a couple of years ago. I helped participate in that, in that same document. I found it interesting that this board member, who is now a current council member, said that he had an epiphany and that the pilots were now the greatest things in sliced bread, which I found to be very upsetting. So the long and short of it is, is that right now, that as relates to this process of the first phase of this has already finished. You have Phase Two and Phase Three. And based on the current dynamics on that council, I cannot see a scenario where this is going to stop. So by the end of the year, those pilots will be approved, and whatever arrangement is got to be made with the town needs to start happening sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you to the board, to the president, and to all.
Can you state your name, please?
Community members. My name is Victoria Stockdale, and I have a child, as you can see, with autism, ADHD. This week on Monday. This week on Monday, there was an episode and, at Zachary's, excuse me, my child's school. And today, I was informed that he was expelled. I was recommend, it was recommend, funded recommend- Okay, suspended. It was based upon the recommendations that we go seek care. As I have many places for many years, the past ten years, going to many places trying to get the best care for him. I just came from the ER and I stayed there six hours trying to get care for my child because that was the recommendation given. Now I'm back in the same position without a school, without medical care. And it's that we do have health insurance. What am I, I'm asking you, the board, I'm asking you citizens, what am I supposed to do? I'm a registered nurse, but I can't work if I have a child to look after. What am I supposed to do?
So I'm here just, just to check if, how's everything going with the swimming, with finding a pair and all that? You, you met with me last time, sir. We talked it over and you said I did a very good time, job speaking. How's all that going?
We can respond at the end of all the comments, okay? We are not allowed to respond directly during this time. But you are doing very well speaking, so go ahead and finish.
All right. So I'm just figuring out what's going on with the swimming and all that because I set up the swimming for, to go swim at Parsippany High School. Last year, it didn't work out so well. They said that the person retired. I, the last lady I probably had was an older woman, I think. I think I had, had her brown hair, so see who I'm going to have this year.
All right, seeing no other members of the public, Drs.? Oh, sorry, Mr. Vennizia, yes, you want to come back?
Had any, any other comments?
We will, we will, after all the, after the public comments meeting, we will be able to comment on everybody's requests. Dr. Sutter?
Ms. Stockdale, there's something that I will talk to you about after the meeting. I don't think it's appropriate to speak in public about that. Mr. Vennizia, I, I would ask that Mrs. Tedesco answer your questions or, or, that's a little, to be honest with you, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question for you. Or Ms. Kogan can answer that, thank you.
Well, I'm, yeah. Mr. Vennizia, everything, you are absolutely on the right track. The town, the school district gets a portion of the property taxes and that is all the school district gets as part of our budget. So whatever is in property taxes is what we are allowed to have a portion of. Anything outside of property taxes, we have no claim on unless we make an outside arrangement with the township for that. The land taxes are included within that pot, so we are getting a portion of the land taxes. However, when we go to create our budget, as you said, we are only allowed to increase our budget two percent on the tax levy. So whether we have seventy-two hundred students or more than seventy-two hundred students, that is the only thing we are allowed to increase. There are some outside adjustments. We are allowed to go above that two percent, depending on certain things and enrollment is one of those things. However, that would require more taxes from the townspeople and it's also not backdated. Like, we can't say we're going to have eight thousand students, so we're asking for that enrollment increase. We have to wait till that enrollment increase happens, show that there's an enrollment increase, and then ask for the aid the next time around. So it's definitely not comparable. So that is some of the information that we're going to ask the Communications Committee to put out, obviously, in a rather quick fashion if there's meetings on coming up next week. But your understanding is, there was nothing misinformed on the information that you presented at this meeting? Oh, Mrs. Golderer?
The difference is, though, during a pilot program, they get a reduced, they get a reduced tax amount that they pay upfront. So basically, it's money go-
But it's not considered a tax amount.
But, but let's say for the next five years or six years, whatever the negotiation is, for those years, we do, we, they don't pay any taxes. So we get no additional money. And we didn't get any percentage of that large pot that they got upfront.
Yes, because those are not taxes.
Right, so that's very important because a lot of people just, you know, think, oh, you're going to get, you know, your percentage of taxes anyway. No, in the, in, in that time period when, when that pilot is being run, we get nothing for the property.
Unless it's negotiated, exactly.
Right, unless you negotiate it with them.
Mrs. Kogan, does anybody have any information on how long these pilot programs have been, are granted?
The three that are on there, do we know, are they five, are they ten, are they?
They were, they asked the Town Council members to vote on pilots that had no financials.
But do you know how long the agreements for?
So there was no information, it was supposed to come out on Monday and I do not know if it has, but the financials page, which put all the numbers and how long, was blank.
So they voted on a blank.
Okay, it's, if there's no further business, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting. Oh, wait, we have to vote on our bulletin, don't we? You always hide that on me. Roll call vote on Superintendent Bulletin Number Nine, Items one through thirty-four with Addendum Items thirty-five to fifty. May I have motion for that? Let's do the business of the board first. Mrs. Orm? And Mrs. Von Aiken, thank you. Now, we can have a roll call, please. Mrs. Abraham? Yes. Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Orm?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Golderer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Now, now that we've found the business of the board, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mrs. Golderer and Mrs. Abraham? Roll call, please, uh, all in favor? All right, meeting adjourned.